Okay, it's 6:30 and we're going to call this meeting to order. John Crist is out tonight, so being the vice chair, I will be the chair tonight, sitting as chair, and we'll do a call, a roll call. Phil?
Here.
Neil?
Present.
Mike Ahern?
Here.
Matt Yetton?
Present.
Zach Terrell is not here. Michael Bouchard?
Present.
Bradford Puffer?
Here.
Molly McCann?
Here.
Jason Ninos?
Yep.
And there's two people we need to, we're down to, so I will see Michael Bouchard?
Thank you, Chair.
And Bradford Puffer as voting members tonight?
Yep.
And now we'll do a review of the minutes from December 5th. So does anybody want to start with any corrections, or?
I didn't see any.
I have a few. Okay, so on page one, under five communications received, Freud tells the board that. Says "the," should be "that." At the bottom of page two, where Crist opened the public hearing, it's Grace Garvey, not Grave.
Good catch, I read that and I didn't even see it.
Then on page three, one, two, three, probably the fourth paragraph down, there's, let's see, the line starts with "proposed use," "uses shall be only," and I think that "s" that's in parentheses, should that be a one, or should that be, because if you read that along, it goes to two, three, four, and five, and I'm just wondering if that "s" should be a one, or should it be "uses"? Do you see where I'm referring to?
I think, yeah, we can, I mean, that's really a clerical thing. I suspect one is supposed to be that the proposed use shall be only those allowed by the ordinance.
Okay, so, okay.
We can, I mean, that's taken straight from, he was citing zoning, so it's just just a reference zoning.
Page four, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, Kathy Kelsey. I think Kelsey is spelled incorrectly, it should be S-E-Y.
She's not a brother, sister of Travis Kelsey?
I don't know. The next paragraph, the last line, "do on their property, not one." Then he wants the amendment to put on hold. Page six, third paragraph where it starts Regina Ronaldo. I'm not sure if that's the correct spelling of her name, but it's spelled a different way at the bottom of that. So I'm not sure how you spell her last name.
The first version is the correct way, with an "I."
So then the last line, it would be incorrect. About midway down in that paragraph, restricted starts the line, and it says she also has concerns, not how. And then a few lines down from that, Crist replies that the board could separate him into two amendments, I think it should be them. And then just the next sentence, it starts with board members, but just beyond that, I think Tenny needs to be inserted in front of Mountain Highway. And then you got her name in that last line for that correction. Okay? I think, okay, the next page, page seven, the one that starts Joan Turley, down her last sentence, I think it's supposed to say she thanks the board for their time. Page eight, the top one, second line, she says make too many individual amendments making, too many amendments would make things more complicated, so make to making. Gary Thorpe on the next paragraph, his name is spelled differently in two different places in that paragraph, so I don't know how his name is spelled, if it's with an "E" or without.
Without the "E."
What's that?
Without an "E."
Without an "E," okay, so the first one is wrong, the second one is okay. And let's see. Page 10. Let's see, the one that, after amendment two, that next long paragraph, about midway down, the line starts part of a development would be more of an impact than the wooden turbines, it probably should say than. And I can give this to you afterwards, Joseph, if you want.
Sure.
On page 11, the next to the last one, Regina Ronaldo, it was with an "I," you said?
Yep.
Okay, so that's correct.
Gary Thorpe is without an "E" on the...
Oh, yeah, up on the, up above.
And I think Hedberg. I don't know, that's correct.
And then page 12, starting out Ronaldo, if it's with an "I," then that has to be corrected.
Sorry, on page 11, Katie Hedberg, Hedberg is with an "E" instead of a "U," fourth page, or fourth paragraph down, sorry to go back.
That's it for me.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second the motion.
A motion and a second. Anybody have anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, the next item is communications received by the board.
All right. Yep, so a number of communications received since the last meeting, the first of which was a letter from BIKO which relates to the conceptual consultation, and that was included in the packet and includes some conceptual information related to a conceptual consultation they would like to have with the board this evening. Also in the packet was a petition zoning amendment which was received, as well as, not included in the packet at this time, but another communication since that time, potentially of interest to the board. Their select board has also received a petition warrant article, so not a zoning article, to switch to electing planning board members, so that, those both will be considered or discussed at the select board's meeting this coming Monday, as far as I understand it.
That was just for planning board, not all boards?
That's, that's my understanding. Yep, that's correct. We also received a permit by notification from Eversource regarding temporary wetlands impacts related to tree clearing in the right-of-way, the power line right-of-way on the north side of town. And then we also received a request from Mountain Village Charter School requesting an extension to their site plan review approval, so they've requested that for the January meeting agenda, but, but we have received that request to extend the one-year timeline for meeting the conditions of approval of the initial site plan approval, and that, in that request, they've also asked for a continuation of their compliance hearing until, I believe, June. So that has also been received at this point.
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing is the application in a public hearing on the minor subdivision on Morse Road. It's parcel 223-068-001, located on the northeast side of Morse Road and owned by Heidi F. H. Adams Trust. The proposed subdivision would divide the existing lot of 11.52 acres into two lots of 1.28 and 10.24. And I believe somebody, is someone here to represent? Kevin?
I think you have small copies.
So we have to go through this first?
I'm Kevin French, representing the applicant, Heidi Adams. Basically, this is an 11 and 1/2 acre parcel vacant land on Morse Road, has, presently has about 300 feet of frontage, and what they're currently looking to do is just divide off one lot on the north side of the property, basically splitting the frontage in half, 150 feet for each piece, and just want, just looking for that, just create a building lot to convey to their son. We have state subdivision approval on it, 1.28 acre lot being that it's under five acres, and they have a, they have a, there's a present Woods Road drive in there that they were probably planned on using, but they would get a driveway application for that at the time that they go for building.
Did you want to look at this big one? Do you need to look at this?
Both the parent lot and the proposed lot are undeveloped.
What's that?
Both the parent lot and the proposed lot are currently undeveloped.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we accept the application as complete.
There's some waivers for that, some waivers on the application, too.
There are some included as attachments to the application.
Yep.
I will say that it's, this is not a whimsical decision, I think, you know, the package presented by the planning staff, it's a lot of the information in front of us, which we haven't discussed yet, but I also feel comfortable approving, or accepting the application as complete.
So is that a second?
I will second that, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? So the application has been accepted.
I think the waivers that were put forward, it looks pretty straightforward, nothing ever raises concern.
No.
Or it's not applicable.
Yeah, it seems like most of them are designed for much larger subdivisions.
Yep.
And it's notable that state subdivision approval, or septic approval, has already been granted, so that eliminates one of those questions we usually deal with.
So should we do the findings of fact?
We should have a hearing first.
Oh, we're gonna have a hearing, right. Okay, so should we open this up to a public hearing now?
I think we shall.
Okay. It is 6:45. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Have any comments or anything?
Long-term planning, yeah.
If you didn't want to the next your parents, now's, now's the way to back out.
You have to buffer in between, excellent.
I was gonna say, it looks like, looks like there's a 10 and 1/2 acre buffer in between. Good planning on the daughter's part.
Well, nothing, we'll close the public hearing at 6:45.
Is there anybody online that wanted to submit?
Nobody online at this time, just Town Hall and Jonathan from PBTB.
Okay, so now should we find, do findings of fact?
Sure. I would offer that this is, this proposed lot is in the ag zone and meets current dimensional requirements of that, of that zone. For both, for both parcels being created.
Meets the lot size, yep, lot size requirements.
Lot size and frontage.
Highway, fire, police, and Plymouth Village water and sewer have no concerns.
Minimum road frontage requirements in the ag zone are hamperly met.
The lot that is under five acres has already been granted subdivision approval.
There's no water and sewer in that part of the ag zone, and they have proper approval for their septic system.
Okay.
A written waiver request was submitted.
Mm-hmm.
In a nice organized manner, thank you.
So with that being said, does anybody like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and second.
Are there any conditions?
Would the, I don't think so, with the waivers, I think that that, just fine.
The only thing that I was concerned about is the, received the driveway permit, but
Okay.
I think there was a note about that, but, you know, a general condition of approval, be that any, any required permits be obtained.
Okay.
As a blanket.
Yeah.
Would you like to change your motion?
Yes.
amend your motion?
I'd like to amend my motion to accept.
To approve.
To, thank you, to approve the subdivision with the condition of the driveway permit approval that's needed from the Polontowne Department.
And I'll second that again.
And motion and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And abstentions?
All right.
Congratulations.
There you go.
Was 20 minutes okay? Maybe.
On to the next up.
Looks like, and these are the plans here, so we will keep a couple copies of this.
For all his neighbors. You want two of them?
Yeah.
Kevin, do you have the Mylar?
Kevin, you mind if I keep one of these for the Conservation Commission?
Can Joseph have another copy?
I think there's one right here. That's a folded one.
And the Mylar.
So, yeah, I think Kevin's got the Mylar, right?
There you go. Perfect, thank you, we'll be, we'll be in touch with the notice of decision.
Okay, so next we have an informational and pre-application review from Harry Blackie, BIKO LLC on Page Street. There he is. And this is a conceptual meeting, just informational, so comments, questions, but nothing is, we can't, nothing is, right.
Yep, that's correct. Non-binding.
Non-binding, that's the word I was looking for, thank you.
Interesting. Trying to figure out where this was going, this makes sense.
It's okay, we can share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want me to set this one there, or set it on a chair somewhere?
Small picture.
Why don't you put it right over here?
Okay, so each year, angle that.
We'll be okay.
Thank you.
And I see some faces that I recognize and some that I don't, and for those that I don't, my name is Harry Blackie, and I kind of take issue with the introduction that only mentioned my name, because if for whatever reason you find what I have to say inappropriate, I want you to know that my brother Dale inherits as much responsibility as I do, so.
I apologize for that, I should've said Dale as well.
The other thing, and you already introduced this fact, if any of you get anxious as a result of having to make decisions in some of these complicated things, one of the things that we're not here tonight to do is to ask you to make a decision, so if anxiety is an issue for you, you can relax. And I think the other thing that I want to do, just because of our history and the history with this parcel, is tell you something else that we're not here to do, and that's to talk about self-storage, which was approved on this land a year ago. But I will share with you what's caused us to make the potential transition from self-storage to housing, and there's three or four issues, or three or four factors, one of which is the fact that after we got our approval, you approved 27,000 square feet of storage within a nine iron shot of our site, which is absolutely appropriate, but it impacts how we feel about that use on that site. The other thing that's happened is the market for that product has softened a little bit since we originally conceived the idea two years ago. But the most important thing is that as a board, you've done something which I think is really, really important for the town, and that is, you've made some revisions to your bylaws, and we participated in the study that you sponsored, that, that as far as I understand, resulted in some of these changes, and I, I just want you to know that I think you've done an amazing thing that a lot of towns haven't. And that article that I, a newspaper article that I put there, it's not for discussion tonight, but you might want to read it at some point, because it's an article out of the Boston Globe that talks about the city of Boston, who basically has the same problems with housing that we face here. So expensive that people are fleeing the city and fleeing the state because they can't afford to live there. And one of the things that the city of Boston has done is, the city of Austin, Texas, has done a number of things, and they did it long enough ago, so that, they're starting to see the, the results of that. And so they, the city of Boston invited the board from Austin to Boston to talk about those things that they've done. And if you read that article, guess what they've done? They've done what you did. They've done what you did. And they did it long enough ago, so that, as I said, they've started to reap the results of that in terms of the demand for housing, it's lowered rents, it's lowered sales prices, it's created volume where there is a need, so I only encourage you to read that because it's, it's support for what you've done, which again, I think is terribly meaningful.
Can you elaborate on, we've done so much. I'm not sure exactly what part of what we've done.
Yeah, so the things, first of all, you've allowed, and I've forgotten exactly what you call them, but you've allowed a second home of a certain size.
ADUs.
Thank you very much, yeah, ADUs. And that's one of the first things that the city of Austin did, and they've done it in Boston now. The second thing is that you've, you've created a category called conditional use, which streamlines the process, the approval, as far as I can tell, it streamlines the approval process, and it, it potentially reduces the cost. I don't think, I would share this number with you, the, our approval cost to get that, that self-storage facility, by the time we get done, it costs $50,000. You know, and I'm not trying to shock you with that number, I just want you to know that when you do things that help reduce that number, but still protect the town, you've done something. And the third piece that I would speak to is this conditional use permit, which allows more than one single-family or two-family house on a lot. What that can potentially do is, is it does increase the density, but it, it reduces the amount of services that you need, it reduces the, the amount of land that you use, it does a lot of really good things, and hopefully reduces the price of the housing. So those are some of the things, I hope that's an answer to your question that you've done, that I think are meaningful. And what we're trying to do here is to follow up on that, because we, we believe that what you've done is, is the right thing, and so what, we know that you haven't, at least as far as I know, you have not had a conditional use permit application so far. So if we pursue that, we'll both be breaking, we'll all be breaking kind of new ground. And I think what I'd like to do at this point is to kind of describe that plan and what, and how we plan to use the land, and then tell you some of the things that we think are in keeping with the new bylaw. So because I can't point to things on the plan that you can see and stand here, I'm gonna ask you to recognize the fact that the top of the plan is north, and so when I talk about some things, I may talk about north, east, south, and west, and if you, if what I'm saying isn't clear, then you can ask questions. So what we have here are two lots, and even when we were talking about self-storage, in order to complete that project, we were gonna have to merge those lots, and in this case, we will merge those lots. And in fact, what we may have to do is rescind that, that plan that was approved and go back to the old plan. There was a boundary adjustment plan that was filed as part of that development, and we may have to rescind that and go back to the predecessor plan. So what we have here, the, the conditional use permit allows multiple, single, and two-family homes on a lot. You've got to have a certain amount of area to justify the density, 40,000 square feet for the first unit, 2,500 square feet for additional units. This plan, this plan meets that requirement. This plan meets that requirement and all of the other requirements of your bylaw. We know that before, there was a lot of pushback by some people on Page Street. They were concerned about traffic. This plan is going to generate more traffic than the self-storage would. I don't think anybody believed how little traffic self-storage really produces, but in fact, housing produces... You get more traffic. So one of the major things that we've done here is we plan to access this from our adjacent subdivision so that the access will go out onto that subdivision road, which meets all of the requirements of a subdivision road in terms of width and construction and all of that. We... The legal frontage for it will be Page Street, but we won't access the property from Page Street. We plan to use architectural fencing to... Because one of the requirements is that we create a buffer between existing single-family homes and the project, so we intend to use architectural fencing to separate what we're proposing here from the existing single-family homes. We've learned, I think, a lot about the housing needs of Plymouth through the project that we're currently building. I think unquestionably, in the last two years, we have built more housing in the town of Plymouth than anybody. Maybe, not only maybe more than anybody, but probably a high percentage of it. And we've learned some things in that process, and we've learned some things about the needs. And we know that Plymouth is not Boston, you know? The market is relatively small, the buying public is relatively small. So what we were searching for here was a product that could meet the needs of several categories of buyers. So, and those categories are age-restricted elderly's, which category, by the way, I fall into. First-time homebuyers, and what I refer to as move-up homebuyers. So what we've done here... So there are 11 homes on this plan. The if you... The large boxes, if you will, there's 11 of those, all of them are in two-family duplexes except one. And each of those boxes represents a single unit, and what we've done is we developed a plan so that we can build the... Backspace. We can put the foundation in, and then we have three options. We can build it as a single-story unit, a single-floor unit, sorry, one-bedroom unit. We can build it as in the Cape version, which gives you the same footprint, but half the square footage upstairs, or we can build it as a two-story colonial, if you will. And what that means is we can put the foundations in, and we don't need to know which of those products we would put on the foundation. And the smaller units, we think would appeal to mostly single people or elderly couples, young people, and older people. We think the story and a half unit would probably appeal to young families who were growing. We could even do the upstairs unfinished, that they could finish at a later time, and the two-story colonial, obviously, is a fit maybe for the move-up buyer. Parking, and that's another criteria that we have to meet, is a requirement for parking. So what we've done is you can look at each of those duplex units and you see the two small boxes. So each of these units could have an attached one-car garage, and then obviously, a parking space behind it. And then we've added some detached garages. You'll see four banks of four small boxes, and those are banks of four garages. And so a buyer could, depending on his price range, could buy any one of these units with no garage, with one garage, or two garages. So again, it gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of price range and accommodate a lot of needs. Some other features, even though we're increasing the density beyond what would typically... You typically find on a 40,000-square-foot lot with a single home, we want to make sure that we create some privacy for each one of them. So each one of these units, you can see kind of a light yellow box in the rear, those are fenced patios. So every unit will have a private rear yard that will be fenced and they will have total use and total control of. Let's see, what else? We've... So to minimize the concern about the amount of area which would be covered with impervious surfaces, either the parking... Excuse me, the pavement of the units, everything on this plan falls within the area that was going to be impervious on the previously approved plan for storage, with the exception of one four-car garage. But the amount of impervious surface here is less than what was contemplated with self-storage. I guess... Does anybody have any questions about the plan?
So your buildings will actually be less impervious impact than the storage buildings?
Correct. Correct.
The black outline where we're seeing the conceptual idea, that's still without the...
That's the property line.
...reversing of the lot line adjustment that was created, correct?
That's the property line of the lots.
Right now? Yep.
Yes. And you will... If you look... Yes, this planet is so small, I can hardly see it, but Unit 1...
Yep.
If you look on the northeast corner of that, you'll see a dotted line.
Yes, yep.
So that dotted line represents the lot line that now exists.
So that would be removed.
That would be removed.
It would be one big lot. And what would the acreage approximately be once you remove that lot line?
I think it's an acre and a half or an acre and three-quarters.
Just to get an idea, yeah. Okay.
The town tax map has it currently. The larger lot shows us 1.0 acres, and the smaller lot to the east looks like 0.53 on the tax map, whether or not that's accurate.
Yeah, well, and the adjustment to that is, that's based on the most recent boundary adjustment plan.
Yeah.
But if we take that away and go back to the previous plan, there's... The area increases.
Yep, yeah, exactly, your density bonuses.
What other questions can I answer?
What's the length of road from where it comes in from Crescent?
Crescent Street? And where would... You mean all the way to the end?
Yes.
20 feet per inch, right?
It is.
Yes, it is.
I think that's a 20-scale plan.
So that's... 30 inches? Yes, sir.
It's nowhere near the town... The town limit, what is it, 800 feet?
1,000.
It's 1,000? So it's not even...
But this also isn't a road, it's a driveway.
Right.
To my understanding, so this will be a private driveway in perpetuity.
Exactly.
How... What kind of emergency access? Is that what you're planning, just for Page Street? Or what's the plan again?
Emergency... No. The plan calls for no access on the Page Street. We've... Dale has met with Sewer and Water to talk about the utilities. We haven't yet met with the police and fire chief. So if they want, for instance, emergency access on the Page Street, then we'll provide that. Yeah, something that's... Yeah, exactly.
That can just be knocked down, obviously.
Exactly, knocked down or opened, depending on how much time... How fast they're trying to get in.
And it would be a conversation now with the fire regarding the life safety, but I know in the past, they sometimes more prefer now turnarounds versus hammerheads for the fire truck and apparatus, but...
I understand.
That's... Like you said, you haven't met with them yet, so that's something you might want to look into with that.
We've provided hammerhead turnarounds here. If they wanted, you know, a conventional subdivision turnaround, then we'll pack up our bags and go home.
Right, you don't have the space for it.
No, we don't.
Doesn't work, doesn't work.
Page Street has water and sewer?
It does.
So you could connect to that?
Our plan... And as I said, Dale's talked to Sewer and Water. So we would plan to connect to the sewer there. There's a manhole right at the end of Page Street, and the invert is low enough, so we should be able to service all of the units by tapping into that manhole. The water lines on Page Street are probably not sufficient in terms of quantity to service this development. So we would come in from Crescent Street, and because where this driveway was, the original subdivision, that was a subdivision road, and so there is a stub on the water line that's right there, so we would just tap onto that and come in.
Would these houses be purchased by the people?
That's a great question. So again, we've learned a lot in the last two years from the development that we're doing adjacent to this. And the format that we're using there is a leased lot situation. So the buyers buy the home, they own it free and clear, they have total responsibility for maintenance of it, but they lease the lots. Now, what that does is... And I'm going to get to a specific answer to your question in just a second. What it does is it significantly reduces the sales price because they don't have to buy the land. And so, now, they do have to pay rent afterwards, so, you know, there's some trail back there where they have to pay, but it significantly reduces the down payment that they have to come up with. And for particularly a lot of young families, that's a really important issue. So we haven't yet decided whether we will continue that. We know that we won't build them as apartments, so really, the two options are condominiums or land lease. And we're leaning towards land lease because we proved to ourselves that that's a big issue in terms of affordability for the marketplace. So... And it's worked well. We... Not only do they lease the lot, but we provide snow removal and landscape maintenance and trash pickup and all of those things that elderly people can't do and young people don't want to do because it doesn't matter whether it's a single person or two adults living in the... They're all working, you know? And they're working a lot of hours. I know you can all identify with that. So we've proven to ourselves that that format is a good one. And so we haven't... We haven't actually decided that we're going to go that way. But the other... One of the other things, as a planning board, you would be interested, I think, in this. Joseph has pointed out to us that in the town of Plymouth, a condominium is considered a subdivision, which means... But if it's land lease and the parcel remains in single ownership, Joseph has suggested that, as far as he knows, it would not be a subdivision. And the approval process and the cost associating with a subdivision approval, we'd be right back where we were with the self-storage. You know, having to spend... I mean, on that self-storage, we spent over a year getting the approvals and spent a lot of money. So we'd like to avoid that process, and we know that the changes that you made in the bylaw, in part, were intended to do that, to make the process more streamlined and easier as long as the town was protected. So that's a long-winded answer to your question, but that's the direction that we're kind of moving in, is a land lease with the homes being owned and seeking approval for that with a conditional use permit.
So with it being a land... Then you wouldn't need to set up an HOA because you'd have the land lease. They'd be paying their fees through that?
Yeah, we don't need to do that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that your other properties on Crescent Street were also... Were already some sort of land lease?
They are.
They are?
They're all land lease, exactly.
And that's the way it was set up?
Exactly.
When you came, before I was on the board?
Well, I don't know when you came on the board, but...
It was...
From the beginning, they've been land lease.
Yeah, interesting.
Well, but the subdivision sat there. Frankly, the subdivision sat there for 10 years because we put in a 1,600-feet-a-road, we built two models, and just about the time we finished with that, it was going to be a conventional subdivision.
Okay.
Okay, single-family home subdivision. Just about the time we finished that, the wheels came off the economy and the market disappeared. So the land sat there for 10 years because we couldn't find a viable product. The land cost... The land development cost, even though that's as easy a site as it has ever been, it's all sand and gravel, even though it's the development... The specific costs are low, the infrastructure cost by the time we finished was so high that we couldn't build a single-family house on a lot and sell them in the town of Plymouth. I'm not saying we couldn't sell one or two, but when you've got a 60-unit development, you can't sell one or two a year. So that's when we went to two units on the lot, which is kind of consistent with what you're doing here, and we went to the land lease program. So...
I give you guys a lot of credit for your perseverance. You guys are... Definitely have that. I love...
We don't... Because of my age, I'm not sure how much longer we're going to be able to...
Speaking for myself, I love the idea of housing versus the storage units, so there's that feedback for me, anyway. What would be the planned east of the pond?
Oh, that's... I'm glad... Well, kind of north and east.
Yeah, north.
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up because it was one of my key sales points, and I forgot it. So when this subdivision was approved, it was... The subdivision part of it was approved as a cluster development, and so there's 35 acres of common open land up there that can never be built on. So the answer is, that's 35 acres of common land that can never be built on, that will be available to these people. And in addition to that, because when we set up the original subdivision, we were talking about family housing, we built a play structure for kids, a basketball court, an open field for ballgames, some picnic tables and grills, and that has largely gone unused because...
Oh, yeah. No, I was just checking, I was exploring, yeah.
But now, you know, that's going to become a great feature for this housing.
Was that in that open area on the north after... Right across from Unit 1? Is that where the play structure was?
No, it is.
Okay, it's still there?
Yes, sir.
Great.
I have a quick question. You mentioned these patios outside fenced in.
Right.
You said patio, is it more like a yard?
The yard.
Is it a yard?
That's a... I'm glad you brought that up, too. So again, what we're trying to do here is appeal to a wide range of buyers and a wide range of incomes. And so the yard will be fenced, but they can choose to add a patio as large... No patio or as large as they want. So we don't burden everybody with the expense of that, but those people that want it can have it.
And so... But is that land still part of the lease? They don't own that as part of buying the house, even though...
That's part of what they rent.
Okay.
That's part of what they rent. Yes, sir?
So I'm not sure anybody on this board was around when you came into the first subdivision for Crescent Street.
So I'm, I'm not sure anybody on this board was around when you came into the first subdivision for Crescent Street, but maybe Neil?
I was around, but I don't think I was on the planning board at that time.
Over the years, we've had a couple discussions with you, one, one, you know, with the storage units and the other was with the, the issue around the sidewalks. But my understanding is that you've got deed restrictions on the, on the property and it's an over, is it over 55 community?
It, it, just.
The Crescent Street.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I, I want to be completely open about that. So the land is not legally age-restricted. We chose to do that.
Okay.
We, we, we have decided that we want it to be an age-restricted community. Because we, we felt, we knew there was a strong demand there and it's proven that we're right. So there's no deed restriction, but, but it is an age-restricted community.
Okay, yeah, I, I, sorry, I was, I didn't mean to confuse the issue with.
No, no.
But my understanding was that it was, it was intended for an over.
Fifty-five and above.
Yep. And, and would you propose that this, would this also, are you thinking that's going to be 55 and above or would that be open to families?
No, that, that's just the, that's the point. What we're trying to do here is develop a product that would be suitable for age-restricted, for first-time home buyers and for move-up buyers.
I just wanted to clarify.
No.
I appreciate that, thank you.
The small unit that we're talking about, which is the single level unit, it's about 950 square feet, which is, you know, perfect for a single person.
With, with a garage and?
With a single garage. And the next one, the story and a half was what, 1,400 square?
1,400, so that would be a cake version. And the architectural front elevation that was part of the package that I think you got shows the front elevation of that unit.
Yep.
In the, in the cake version. So, so the single-story unit, the roof wouldn't be as high and the two-story, obviously, it would be a full second floor.
The two-story Colonia is about 1,900 square feet. So we got a 950, a 14, and a 19, all with the same foundation.
I think you're planning to fill, you know, a, a needed portion of housing in, in town. You know, I think, I think you'd sell these pretty quickly if you were to build them. Not that that's our concern, but, you know, I, I think, I, I'm excited to see that someone has taken advantage of the zoning amendments that were passed last year as part of our, our discussion. You know, we've, we've been focusing on affordable housing or workforce housing and, you know, this may fit that need.
I think it will to a large degree, but I, 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 I don't want to be, I don't want you to feel too optimistic. It's, it's really, really difficult in today's market to bring in a product that everybody can afford.
Sure.
It just, you just can't do it. But, but we think to the extent that it can be done, if we can't do it with this product, it can't be done.
Right, no. Ray?
I echo your thoughts, Phil. In all of the zoning work done the last 18 months, the number one best thing for opportunity of housing is the multiple buildings on one lot. That's out of all the changes we made, that is the number one thing that sticks out like a sore thumb, like that is, can be taken advantage of very well. And that is a product of that right there, conceptual product of that, to its fullest advantage. Joseph, one question for you. I just, I haven't seen this in my time on the board yet. And it just poses an interesting thought, because I don't see an issue at all, but could they see an issue? So legal, their legal road frontage is conceptually on Page Street, not used at all, though, and the access is actually off of another street, which, yeah, can you speak to that, actually?
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question. So traditionally, we have not had a requirement in zoning that your legal road frontage be the way that you access the property. So however, with a development like this, I would think unless that lot line were, you know, including the access as a part, integral part of the lot, you would definitely want to review what the mechanism is to, to make sure that access stays there. If it is on a different lot, if it's crossing, you know, understanding their current ownership, under the same ownership today, you want to make sure that you have a mechanism in there so that is preserved if that's the way that this development is going to be accessed. So it's, it definitely adds another step that the board will want to keep an eye on and make sure that they're planning for that. Though I, I believe, and I, I could be mistaken, that if the previ, I, I believe under the previous lot configuration, and I'm not sure if this is exactly accurate, that lot line for the parcel on the east side of Page Street actually did go all the way around to Crescent Street, so perhaps the revocation of that boundary adjustment would actually give them legal frontage on both. But, yeah, good, I, I think that's a good thing to be checking for.
Okay, because we do say you must have this road frontage, but.
Right.
In our zoning, nor any other town's zoning I've ever read says you need to have the road frontage, and that's the road frontage you need to use for access.
Correct, they're too sort of totally, you know, they're, you know, it's sort of a.
To reinforce what Joseph said, and he and I had a discussion about this today, that's why we're, that's one of the reasons why we're talking about a revocation of that plan, because if that's revoked, then this neck that goes out to Crescent Street is actually, will actually be part of the lots and we won't have to do it with an easement. It'll be part of the lots and it will give us frontage, not only in Page Street, legal frontage, but on Crescent Street as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, but it is a good, it is a good, just general comment, too, that sometimes, you know, when we're looking at things like building on a road that's a private or class six road two, six, seven, four, 41, you know, there really are, what is the legal frontage of the lot? And how is the lot accessed? But they don't always, yeah, they aren't, they aren't always the same. So that's a, yeah, it's a good thing to keep an eye on.
Thanks. You mentioned revocation of the previous boundary line adjustment. Was it recorded? Not, not that.
It was recorded.
Okay.
So, and Joseph's been great about sharing with me the process that we would have to go through in order to get that plan revoked. And it, it doesn't sound to me like it's heavy lifting.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's a, you know, there is a RSA that deals with planning board revocation of a recorded, planning board-approved plan. The process under that statute is pretty straightforward. There's a list of reasons that the board can use to revoke a plan and request of the property owner is one of those reasons. So if you don't have to be sort of making that step of documenting that they didn't meet a step, but it's actually, you know, there's the other side of revocation where if a condition was placed that was never followed, but somehow the plan got recorded, you had to revoke it in sort of a, a situation where there was an agreement, that, that can be a little more difficult of making sure you document that. But the request of the property owner is one of the legal reasons under the statute. So it's a, you know, it's a, it's a relatively straightforward process. Notice has to be sent to the abutters. The board doesn't have to hold a public hearing unless an abutter, property owner, or the board requests one, but you do have to notice the meeting like it were a public hearing. And then there's a certain time period after making that decision that you have to wait. And then, once that time period has elapsed, there's basically just a very, like a one-page notice that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds that references the plan and says, is signed by the planning board chair and says, "The board voted on X day to record this plan," or "to revoke this plan that was recorded at plan number blank, and here's the reason."
What's the closest hydrant to the beginning of, say, in there? Do you guys, do you guys have hydrants in there?
Yeah, we do. Right at the end of the driveway there where it connects to Crescent.
Is, yeah, where it loops up there?
Right on that curve right there, there's a hydrant.
Excellent.
And one of the things that, we haven't even talked to Sewer and Water about this, but after Dale met with them and told me what there was in terms of water, one of the things that we might do is tie our main into the main on Page Street? So that it, so that.
On Page Street.
Well, no, you didn't, they didn't talk to you about Page Street. That's something I'm saying, that, so that would create a loop there and might be of some advantage to the town if there was a water loop there.
I, I know that a lot of utilities are looking at redundancy and looping all their services so that if there's a disturbance on one part of a loop, you can isolate it and continue serving other portions of it.
And it may not be appropriate to do that, but it's, it's.
Electric utilities are doing that as well.
Are you going to do underground electric as well?
Yeah.
Anybody have any more questions or comments or anything?
I'm, I'm optimistic about this.
Yeah, that was very, that was really good, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming in.
That was.
Appreciate this. Do you have any other questions for us?
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully we.
A question I would have, I mean, is this where you guys were heading your mind and your visual and you made those bylaw changes?
I don't, I don't think it's outside of the possibilities.
That seems fair, I think.
I, I was curious, I mean, did you consider townhome construction? So one of the things we added this year was, was, what do we call it, attached single-family? Which is, you know, multiple buildings but in, on one footprint, but, you know, I was curious if that was a model that you'd, you'd considered for this location?
And?
It does require a site, I think what you've done qualifies under 401.12 that says, except for detached, single-family and two-family dwellings, all main structures shall be subject to site plan review. But, I mean, you know, if you wanted to do a, a townhouse construction, you know, I don't think anybody on this board would object to going through the site plan review process if you wanted to consider that.
And thank you for bringing that up. And I, I believe that that particular product not only requires a site plan review, but I think it also requires a special permit. I don't think it's, it's allowed to use in the zone without a special permit.
That may be the case.
So to be perfectly honest.
I'd have to look at the table of uses there.
We, we don't want to go down that road.
Right, okay.
Because of how extensive and expensive the process is. Because all of that's just going to add to the cost of the housing.
And it seems like you've got a model that works of what you're, what you've proposed. Yeah.
We hope.
Good.
Okay, if you don't have any more questions, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, hope it was helpful for you.
It's based on what you said. I think you could reasonably expect us to.
So I, yeah, this is, I think, the most optimistic zoning ordinance we changed last year was.
That would be townhouse.
To lower that construct, that cost of infrastructure.
I thought you said that single-family.
And I think this is a pure example of being able to maximize your efficiency and what it could look like.
Maybe it didn't make it to the table of uses.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the, what would this fall under the table of use right now? Molly and Phil, I think you guys are.
We were just debating that. I was wondering if, if it got added to the single-family attached or if it falls under the multifamily.
So this might, quick read, so that 401.1 deals with single and two families specifically.
Right.
So they would be, single families or two families, most would be my, my immediate interpretation based on that. The reference to 401.1, the co-location. As far as from a code perspective, I'm not sure.
Oh, here we are, single-family dwelling attached, not exceeding four units permitted.
Yeah.
You didn't want to get in a big.
Yeah.
And then I don't know if the board had any comments on that application form that was for a conditional use permit under this section, really just taking the form that we used when the conditional use permit was the tool for granting accessory dwelling unit permits, and then plugging in the information that pertains to this section as opposed to the, the former ADU section.
So that was something you, you generated as something we would consider?
Yep, and that was in the, the follow-up email. It was not in the first email, but if anybody has any comments on that, certainly let me know. Happy to make any tweaks if need be, but it's a, you know, it really did just sort of copy the language from the conditional use permit application form that we, that we already had on file and update it to reflect section 401.
So now, other business for members of the board and planning staff, the zoning amendments by petition.
Did you want me to give a, give a summary?
Sure, yeah.
Sure, so RSA 675:4 is method of enactment by petition for proposed zoning amendments. There is a window of time in advance of town meeting where citizens, 25 or more voters, may petition for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, and one of those has been received. So the statute states that the planning board at its first regular meeting following the petition period shall set the date of the public hearing for each petitioned amendment which is received and shall hold a public hearing on each petitioned amendment. Notice for the time and place of the public hearing shall be the same as that provided in RSA 675.7. That petition period did end on December 11th and the one petition that was in the packet is the one that has been received. So with this being the first meeting following that, you know, the, the board's next step is to schedule a public hearing. The notice does have to be in accordance with the public notice requirements for zoning amendments, which requires, you know, 10 days in advance, not including the day of posting and the day of the meeting. So really kind of like a 10 days plus on, on either end. And they must be posted in two public places and either on the website or in a newspaper of general circulation. Traditionally, we have done both. That's just been the practice in town of a newspaper of general circulation and on the town's website. But statutorily, it's, it doesn't have to be both. The other thing is that the last day under statute to hold a final public hearing on proposed zoning amendments is February 3rd. So basically, that, that is, that narrows down the dates that the board could schedule a public hearing on. The soonest really would be that, the meeting that the board already has other zoning amendment public hearings on, that's January 2nd. The board, we do have just enough time to legally post notice of a zoning amendment public hearing for that date. We would meet all statutory requirements. The only slight caveat being that the newspaper is running on a holiday schedule for running notices, so the notice in the newspaper would not be able to come out until the day of the hearing. So the newspaper that morning would have the notice, which, you know, as I said, that we've historically done that in the Record Enterprise as a, an additional form of notice to the public. However, legally, that's not one of the, the ones that we need to do to check a legal box, so the board could do that. The other meeting in advance is the board's business meeting, though that one, you know, it's unclear.
We have quite a number of things on the agenda that we've put off to that meeting, have we not?
We do have some continuations, yeah, some things that have kind of all, yeah, that, that's.
So the, yeah, the, the business meeting on the 16th. Like, I think, you know, a lot of the continuations for other, other site plans have been continued to that point.
Yeah, Mountain Village Charter School in Tree Lake.
So are you saying we can continue this to the second?
We do have the time to post that in accordance with the statute. So yes, the, to answer that question, the only thing would be we couldn't, usually we try to get it in the paper the week before. This would come out the day of. It would still be in the paper, but it wouldn't be as far in advance as we usually have done.
Legally, we don't have to, you know, we meet that requirement by posting on the website, right?
Correct, legally speaking, you don't, towns are not required to post on the, in the paper if you post on the website. It's just a.
Does the town ever go to other, other places like the?
Sun.
Yeah, La Conia Sun.
We can do that.
That, that is a paper of local circulation. It's free, it's even, it's, it's distributed daily.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, it's some.
I, I suspect that it's more expensive, but in a pinch, I mean, I suspect we could pay for it if we had to.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could definitely do that. My understanding was that some number of years ago, I don't know exactly when, the board switched from the Sun to the Record Enterprise. The Record Enterprise, being weekly, is a bit more constrained as far as when you can actually post something in it, but it's certainly, I, I would agree that either one is, is generally circulated in town. It's really sort of how the board, which one the board prefers.
Three or four years ago where the public. Three or four years ago where the public came to the forefront concerned that they weren't seeing something. And I forget what it was over, but that's when, that's when the change, maybe five years ago, but I remember that happening.
That we started posting in the Record?
In the Record, yeah.
So, do we want to put this one in the Laconia Sun because of the close...
I don't even think we have to, though.
Close to say, we don't really have to, but...
Is it something you'd put it in daily or just like on Monday?
Well, typically, we run our notices on the date that the Record Enterprise comes out. We don't get any choice. So, with the Sun, as long as it's in that paper, I could check what the, I'm sure they have different packages. I don't know those offhand because we've always done it in the Record, but I'm sure I could get in touch with them and do any number of options.
So, my thinking is it's probably better to schedule this on January 2nd with the other public hearings because the public will already be anticipating an opportunity to offer feedback at that time.
Yeah. So, we may not be, we may not need to do the Sun either because they're already, they already know there's a hearing on this exact same issue.
Yeah.
So, we'll just post it in the normal places, the two public places, the website and...
Yeah, I think if it was deviating from the norm, it might be more of a concern.
Mm-hmm. All right, I'll make a motion that we schedule this public hearing for January 2nd for the petition zoning amendment.
Anyone want to second that?
Second it.
Okay, so, it's been motioned and seconded, any discussion?
The only discussion I have is that we don't really have an option of having hearing. It's required. I think, I think it's not an option whether we have a hearing or not. We're required to have a hearing.
Have to have.
I think, I mean, I think we're serving the public interest as best we can by scheduling it with the public hearing for the other zoning amendments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Okay. I do have one other thing under other business regarding the SIP that was sent to the Select Board. They understood what it was about, but they did not approve it. And it is because there's a line item under the Town Hall that has $200,000 in it for that year for an elevator, and that's not going to be needed. So, that will come out and it will place that.
It can be held there, I mean, it's a budgeting tool. It doesn't, it's not, there's no commitment to expend there.
Right, but they just, just so you know, they chose not to put that, put it in at this point. And that was the reason.
Is our elevator still good, good to go?
They thought the cables would get through another year.
Oh, good.
Should not say this.
Remind me not to use the elevator in time soon.
For the record, that was sarcasm.
Just don't jump while you're in there.
Sarcasm sometimes.
I've learned not to mess around in elevators, I've been stuck in two. Oh, yeah.
Are there any other committee, anything, or anyone else would like to...
The Town Hall was only involved in one.
And public comments?
No one.
There are none?
It's Frank.
So?
It's Frank.
We're at that point of the evening?
I would like to congratulate Sue on cheering your first meeting.
Yes, congrats, Sue.
Great job.
Thank you.
Move to a drink, unless anybody else has anything else?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and oppose? Abstain.
Not going to do that to you on your first night, Sue.
Great, thank you.